Hey.
Alrighty, good afternoon, everybody. It's Wednesday night, 2:30. This is a special board meeting of the Water Valley Select Board. I am the chair. And here today also is Bob Reed, Vice Chair and Select Board Member Wendy Rafferty. So we have a quorum. Now, there's one piece of administrative business I'm going to take care of, and then I'll go over it with the floor. If someone has something they'd like to talk about, I'd like to. Get this done, so Judy can move on to do something more productive than sitting in a meeting with us. So this involves. I am free, E. Bond sale was out?
Yeah, so the towns, the town utilizes the new community municipal bond bank. For the capital items that you vote on at town meetings, so we sold. One million, two hundred thousand, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of bonds. This time, we participated in the bond bank sale. We received. The bond bank combines many different towns together and goes out in a single sale. And the interest rates came back at three point three five percent for our fifteen year bond, so very good rates. We have paperwork and votes that the board has to think. To complete those, to complete the paperwork for so many of them. So we have paperwork here, Rich, your purple arrow.
Okay.
Bob, your green arrow, and Wendy's yellow arrow. And there's multiple copies of each, and there is. A. Significant that you, the vote that you're taking is to enter these ordinance. At the true interest cost of three point three five percent.
Okay.
And fifteen year note. So if you take, accept that as the terms for bonds.
Right.
And sign this paperwork, I mean, there's. Go through it if you want, but that's the just the way it's. The term, which it marks. No, it's multiple signatures on the right sheets.
So I'm gonna get five years signing things without reading, so I'll just continue to do that.
You're such a good fellow. No, but I want to ask that little boy. But no, so, but in essence, this is all the legal reasons behind a fifteen year note, three point three five percent for one million.
Okay, so I will make that motion. Does anybody like to, does anybody like to discuss this further? Or would you be willing to join me in signing this without reading? All in favor?
That's what I'm seeing.
I'm joking, of course, we have discussed this numerous times about the bond sale and. It stems from the town meeting in March.
Yeah, and this is for the road project and for waste management. Is what money machine.
So the bond sale happens, what, twice a year? So we have to wait for the sale.
There's one in the summer and one.
Right. So this is formalizing what the town approved to borrow. And at the excellent rate of three point three five percent. Wow.
Of this. Using. Yes. I don't want to get too close, we don't want to open.
Okay, just, you can just. Tell us what to. And what order you want us to do it. In the meantime, folks, when I look at the agenda. You can see what we're going to talk about. If there's something not on the agenda, next thing I'm going to do is ask the board. If there's something that's not on the agenda that I'd like to talk about, that would be the time to. To raise, what you'd like to talk about. Alright. That's right. So. I'm a friend. It's nothing like having the nuns over you when you're signing. That companionship was. Yes, there's someone who's.
I remember that too.
Yeah, yeah, these are people of a certain age. The armor method, I had.
So did we.
Yeah.
Take them to.
I'll take them all downstairs and check in.
This is just the one. Right? I went to the same grade school as my mother, and she was left-handed like me, but she was forced with the rule to become.
Right-handed.
Right-handed.
Yes.
That's pretty weird.
Yes. What was done last time? I even looked up the eye.
Oh, it's good.
Rich, we're the only ones that are written in right mind.
Yeah. Yeah, that's right.
My son knows.
We resisted the, well, it wasn't an issue back in, in our day, but. Without sanctioning the fact that the Latin word for left is sinist. Sinist, and for right is, is text. Somehow that got transmorgified, you know, hit the devil with the.
Yes.
Right hand. They're left hand. Our report is starting. Well, that was my coast guy, Craig, he came forward and started. Alright, we're almost there, sorry.
Well, they couldn't break you, like, it didn't even.
They didn't even drop.
It didn't even.
I was. It was new, I was Marie Reed's son, and that was enough for them to take a special one between me. It's not a good thing when you go to the same grade school as your mother. And. And the same nun was still there.
They never die.
They never seem to differ, isn't that right? And since I'm just saying this, you know, God rest his soul, but my mother wasn't the best student in class. So I was there to take advantage of that. Remediation, so it's not a word. Did we get everything signed? Properly, I hope.
Looking good.
Alright, so Mark is checking that. Let me open it to privilege of the floor. Is there something that's not on the agenda that folks here would like to talk about?
Well, I like.
Okay, we've covered it. Alright, if there's something on the agenda and you got, you don't have. It's later, but you need to move along in your life, is there anything like that going on even? Would you want to talk about that first? Yeah, we just roll through the agenda. Let's roll through the agenda, okay? So the first thing is the transfer station discussion. There are four elements to that discussion. Let us start with the operations. Plan review.
So as we started the discussion, I, I, we all the changes that I made in the after lock-in, which is planned itself is. Went over the schedule that we talked about at the last meeting. On the, the Wednesday. I'm sorry, Sunday, Monday, and Wednesday. Sundays being holidays, Mondays.
On the appropriate.
On the appropriate time during all the weekends. And then Tuesdays and Thursdays, the brush pile will be by. And going over the operation of the. The area down here. We can do that. By with the part-time program. And that will stem to this.
Right, and she's agreed to that.
And with that, with that schedule of Sunday, Monday, Wednesday.
If we have a holiday on a Monday or Wednesday.
Yeah, we'll have.
We'll have to figure out.
We'll announce it, yes.
Cancel or, and just go to the next day. Another day. Depending on the holidays.
Yeah.
Christmas.
What we're gonna do on the other two days.
The other two days, they'll, she'll be doing two things. She'll be backing up on the trash truck. And she'll be doing the on-call brush. Because we're not moving the brush power down. We're just moving everything else, everything except that. But again, it counts as part of the transfer station, so. We, we have to keep the gate locked unless it's needed. And because we want her to be able to back up on the trash truck, and there will be maintenance that will need to be done. Out here with cleanup, and if Casella comes in to empty the C and D can or whatever, she'll have to be available on those two days. So, but she can do that because the gates will be closed and locked down here. She'll be open.
For the brush, on Tuesday, there are sales coming up.
We talked about eight to three thirty. Eight to three thirty, eight to three or eight to three thirty will be the time frame that will be open on those three days. But other than that.
And the cost for. Comparing the worker, Jan, from full, two full from part-time, that was in our budget.
It was in our budget.
It was part of the plan anyway, so there's got no additional.
No additional.
Costs, unanticipated costs. We were looking to do that anyway. I, I, any questions?
Well, I suspect this could be, you know, a hardship for people, they're gonna view it as a hardship.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And. Not much we can do about it, is that? We have, we have the staffing and the short handling of staff as it is.
Yep. And, and this, this will, but by having is, so the regulation in this goes, you know, I think you know, question this last time, when you got the. The. Our initial, when we put together this plan, was that we would have to have two people, you know, within. The regulations, I think we talked about a little bit before, but this folks are here.
Sure.
The regulations say that we must be able to see the trash, the, whether it's in the C and D can or whether it's in the dumpsters themselves. The attendant needs to be able to visually watch that being there. So it's small enough down here that everything. Can be visible all at the same time, so we can have one person deal with this transfer station. When we go to the upper transfer station. It'll be much more spread out, and we're going to need two people whenever we're.
I wonder whether we, you know, I understand that.
Yeah.
But I hadn't, I thought it. It seems like we ought to at least take a look at the plan up there and see whether or not this. Whether or not we can keep things in proximity to each other, we can operate with one. I mean, maybe we can't, but I think it's at least, at least worth taking a look at.
Should be an emergency, so I could say, if I could close it.
Or have someone off the, I, I think that's something we can look at once we get further down. Downstairs, it's gonna be tough.
I think, I agree it should be tough, but I think, let's take a look at it. Let's just say, is there some way that you can have a central place to. I mean, to see both directions, like. I don't know, maybe it doesn't.
That will cause us to do a completely redesigned, but.
Well, that's.
That, that plan right there, that we are getting ready to fit. Is, we can, there, there's no way to organize that where everything is. In, in a tight enough area. And, and the reason that we spread it out that way was maintenance. Especially in the winter time for plowing and.
We're looking to have a circuit. Having, we operated as a camera that can see what's going on at some other location.
I did, yeah, we can look at.
I'm just, I'm just thinking, let's think of the contingent.
Right. Wendy, you have something you want to?
Yeah. Why are we, for birthday on Sunday, Monday, Wednesdays, or Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday?
We don't think that's present. Next Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday, if you want to.
And then the. Say.
I, I'll talk to you in the month about, because. The Monday, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, except for in the current situation, it was set up. Because so she could back up on Tuesdays, Thursdays.
Right.
But if we can, if we can make that work.
Said, we've got central line, yeah.
Right.
Sometimes you should be in there every day.
Friday, does not have Friday and Saturday, it would be not.
It'd be two days, it would be close. Well, let's see what her schedule, I mean, I, I think the governing, one of the governing things would be the schedule that she can. She can maintain the childcare and so forth.
Well, it's not her schedule.
She's fine with. She's fine any of the days, okay.
She just does not want to work Saturdays because we have talked.
Okay, so that's the limiting factor in that.
And we want to be open enough for the property managers.
Right.
To service the, to service the condo associations and stuff, and they're like, bring C and D. And all of that. Doing the. Rather than. Because they're losing a day, no matter how we schedule, they're losing.
Right. Okay, so I think to Bob's point. I think we're locked, we're obviously locked into this design, given the cost of the engineering and everything.
Well, I, I mean, we're.
To this point.
I'll go back and I'll talk to Davidson and say, okay, we want to be able to see everything visually. With this setup and with this out.
Okay.
How do we?
How is that?
It's also.
How can it be done with that? I, I think that, I mean, let's get moving on the actual. Construction of it, and then we could look at.
Yeah, but I would want.
The operations.
Answers. I would want to get.
If we can make changes, right.
Making changes first, before we even put this out.
Right.
Because I don't want to start building this.
I'm agreeing with you. I guess I'm, I'm just saying that we've got a. A. Engineering. Plan on it, so. I think it will cost money to make changes. And given the size, plus we're trying to get recycling in there too.
Well, and that's the other thing we have, we have an opportunity, Casella has a program for recycling mattresses, so we have another can that we could bring in. Which mattresses is one of our, and it's right there, that's your, you have a sheet on it. It's one of the. It's one of our most bulk items. It's not a big weight item, but it takes up a lot of room in the truck, and we can definitely. Out of the trucks and into a special.
It's safe.
It's gonna save us a lot of money because we go up to the park for load, like, you know, definitely. Because the mattresses, they were in the dumpster.
Right.
And they, you know, you, they don't compress as much as less.
I think too, the, the issue of the number of attendants is also going to relate to the issue of convenience. So if we go to one attendant, as we're going to do in hopefully down here in lower, I'll call it the lower income transport station. And hopefully the state will buy off on that. So I'm sure they can come and inspect our operation. Since they're the driving force now, which we have been since, what, August was last year. If we only have one person, if that person is observing what's going on, depending upon what's going on, anyone else trying to use the facility. It's gonna, it's gonna have to wait. With one person, whereas with two people. It, you know, it would be, one person can still be checking people and checking their platforms and getting them. And if there's another person going to a different part and say not the household waste, but to. But to, you know, one of the C and D can, if you can have that going on. Right.
Oh, I mean, we know right now how I just find employees.
Oh, yeah. If we can use technology.
Cameras, or we got something that's fall back on in case of, yeah, in case we're short handed.
Right. I, I, I agree, because we can see if technology can help us, but. As I see this schedule, it's something we talked about. I know I'm not getting you guys, just wanted to finish the discussion among, among us. There's no slackens. If someone calls in sick.
Somebody else is doing something else.
Or someone will have to come in, but potentially that may not be available depending on whatever else is going on. For example, in snow plowing, if those folks were overnight, there may not be somebody who can man it. So there's a possibility that we're going to have to cancel the day here or there depending upon. Conditions, but given the small number, we're talking now six full-time. Employees and, and public work, and. There could be other things going on, so that's also truth in advertising, there's also the possibility of, you know, try to do the three days. We should be able to do the three days, but there is no slack that allows us to stay three days. If some other things start to impinge on the work schedule, it's something we need to get out of. So unless you, well, once it's something where I see people here would like to.
We're talking about advertising, how a CEO person, is that, that's a temper.
We have not, we have not started yet.
But that's still something I'm going to need to do.
Potentially.
Potentially, given the, the original idea.
Thing was fun.
Two people up there.
Then you could eventually do a couple of part-timers if you can find.
Right.
To back up the one part timer that's there.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I wasn't decided that the transfer station was only going to be open three days a week.
Well, staffing was the major driver.
Yeah.
In, in that, in that decision. Secondly, I would say that the, it's not going, the number of days is not, should not impact. The vast majority of people in Waterville Valley, since eighty-seven percent, I think you did the analysis. Residences are, already have dumpsters at their associations, and those, those, nothing is changing. But the other one hundred and thirty-five to hundred and forty, and. Frankly, maintaining three days a week, given everything else Department of Works does for those hundred and thirty-five, hundred and forty. It's, it's gonna be challenging, I think, but it was staffing that was.
And I'd also like to, so we cannot be open from six P M. to six A.
State regulations.
So that has to change.
Yeah.
So that's why it has to be gabled. It is, it is actually state law that a transfer station has to be closed between those hours. So the most we can run is six A and, the sixth A. And then we, we have been totally unmanned down there, and now we need to have somebody physically there. And so that's there, that's where the three days fell off.
The Wednesday to Sunday seems like a long timeframe. Well, that's what I suggested, though, Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday.
Right.
And then, like, the homeowners that just come up on weekends. They're not gonna have much trash if they have to go on Saturday, but then, what are the weekends for the next weekend?
It is, those are the one cat, that is the one category that's gonna be the most problematic.
Yeah.
I figured most people leave on Sunday.
Yeah.
So that's the open, it's the open on Sunday.
Right. If you look at, and most, right, but those of us who live here full-time, we feel three days a week prevents, you know, enough opportunity to. To dispose of your household waste. And then you have those property owners who don't live here full-time, but who come up. But, and it seems, seemed to us the pattern had been that most of those folks leave on a Sunday. Or a Monday on a long weekend, so that's why that Sunday, so I think we'll capture of that thirteen or so percent. That we're trying to, that we're trying to service with these dumpsters, I think we're gonna be able to capture the vast majority, but there is that one category of people. Who come up here and only, but not, they're not, might not leave on a Sunday. We have some ideas, we, once we get this up and running, we have some ideas for how we may be able to, to help those folks, whether it's. Helping them with, you know, trash bins, they can leave in the garage, to leave the trash in there. It's, it's gonna be an issue. I, part of this is frankly, we want to get it up and running because. We want to get it up, and we have to, and that's, this is the initial, you know, this is the initial plan, and then obviously we can make modifications. From that point on, but, but hours and staffing are, are really what is driving us.
You know, like everybody else around here, we can't find employees, so we gotta use, so the girl that we have is three days a week, she's gonna go to full-time. Which allows us to do.
Yeah, that was a big, a big plus for us, a big, a big help that she was willing to go. Full-time.
And do a weekend.
And do a, and do a weekend day, Sunday.
Just need to hope that she works for us forever.
Right.
Finding someone else who's gonna work the weekend schedule.
And give them a, go for one time, the people are all here.
It's, but I think people have to be licensed.
They have to be licensed.
I, I think that's, yeah, we can't just hire, say, like a teenager, you know, trying to make some money on, on weekends or something. It has to be a licensed train by state regulation. Anything for, so I guess we covered operations, planning, review, and staffing. Is anybody, I'm sorry.
Can I ask some questions about this?
Sure.
Is there going to be a regular trash room that was scheduled by the trash truck? So I really like the idea of like Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday, to split it up. But also like for the condo associations, because we know what's gonna happen, you know, people are gonna be using the.
And for the commercials too.
Right, right? So if we could have some kind of schedules, we knew on the off days that, you know, the trash would be picked up there, that would be really helpful, Mark, so now, I don't know if we could do that.
No, we, we can't, well, a couple of things, we, we could potentially do that in the spring and summer. But around, around vacation holiday times, the, the schedule would change, and all winter it would change because these are the same people who plow the roads, so. At the set schedule, right now, we, we have a semi-schedule that follows, where you will. Start on Monday, do pickups from the weekend. If the truck is full, which most of the time it is, then on Tuesday morning, first thing, goes up to Bethlehem, empties the truck. Comes back and starts picking up again. That allows the co-driver, because he can go to Bethlehem alone, the co-driver that goes around you, person. Driving the truck around town. They can do other facilities work or road work, whatever they need to. They go back out on Wednesday or Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday morning, do another round of pickup. And, or take a day off and then do a round of pickup, leave on Friday, empty truck, so that we don't have. Trash in the truck over the weekend. So they're on sort of a schedule, and, and they've worked it out with most of the commercials, especially. Because they've got the larger volume than the condos. Some condos don't get picked up for a couple of. Of passes, right? They'll drive by everybody and check them out at least once a week. But sometimes they don't empty them because it's a quarter of a, of a dumpster or whatever.
Yeah.
Now, they can do that more in the winter than they can in the summer, which is, it seems too bad. With food rotting and everything and weather like this, so they will empty. Quarter and half load dumpsters, but we don't like to because that takes time and. We have seventy-seven dumpsters.
Now, we're up to seven, seven.
That we're serviced, so.
I get it. Well, you know, we're, we're typically one that. Will get emptied, and in certain times of the year, we used to get a third dumpster, just for a couple of weeks, but we can't anymore, so. What kind of support can we get from public safety when people are illegally dumping and, you know, just using the trash and filling it up?
So we've talked about that. We haven't come to any conclusion, but I think we need to work with the individual. Associations and the property managers. Because there's a problem with, say, securing it, locking it, and then the truck showing up and having to open. And finding all this sort of thing.
Right.
It's gonna be one of those problems, I, the way we approach it, that we're gonna have to work through that. Same with the. Um it's gonna be one of those problems, I, the way we approach it, that we're gonna have to work through that, same with the, same with the commercials. Um, yeah, it's going to, it's going to be an issue. Uh we've talked about uh increasing fines uh for people, uh you know, that are illegally. Uh dumping, if we can find a way to to identify them, that's.
Whether it's cameras or however you.
And do we need to have a sign on the dumpsters that says, you know, for, you know, like owners and guests only for, like, safety to be able to enforce any.
And we'll, we'll work it out with public safety, keep working the signs.
Right.
To say.
And then we'll work with the property managers. Right to deal with that, there there're gonna be some interesting. Worrying pains here, I think, until we kind of figure out how best to do this. We were lucky, you got away with this for what, forty years or so before they finally. Found us and said you're the only town in all of the answer that was doing what we were doing. They originally gave us thirty days last August to fix it. And we're under administrative consent order as well, which means if we don't fix this, we get fined every day. So we're working with the state, we think this is solve their issue, then we have the added complication of the slowdown up. Getting it ready up to the upper transfer, so that's why we had to move it down. Here, there are a lot of moving parts, so. That's the saga.
People are trying to complain no matter what, till they get used to it.
Well, I'm hoping to that, as I said earlier, uh practically, this should only impact. You know, that the 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 single-family homeowners such as me. Uh who are only, are only placed to to dispose of our household waste is here. And we're just gonna have to get used to coming on certain days to do that.
Which is what everyone does back in their hometown.
It's not uncommon.
And I think this is great and I can't believe it took forty years for it to happen. I will, I will sing its praises to everyone who comes to me to complain.
Get a phone number, email to to uh to do that, of course, yeah.
So we gotta, now we gotta do this, uh the stickers.
Yeah, we're, um I I think that we should just have a single sticker. Uh I think I would recommend that we have um one, at least one per property owner. Okay, and then uh the way that they do it down in Jordan, the property owners can come in and purchase one additional. If they have multiple cars. Um I I don't know that we're large enough and again, we, you know, we're really talking about the single-family homeowners. Um I do think that because we are including the. C and D and the metals and the electronics and everything else, that even stickers that go out should go out to. And then um maybe the single-family homeowners can come in for a second one. Um if they want a multiple vehicles. Um the uh the town that I was at opened, they um had a different color that they would. But annually, whenever they decided to change it, it's because people leave and.
Yep.
So this year you have to have an orange sticker, the next year you have to have a green sticker. And we can.
You could put the date on it, but okay, color gives a little more flexibility, you don't have to do whatever.
Right, it's same, right, yeah.
Then, um so property management companies, um I would recommend that we. That we have a different color sticker for them. Um that, you know, or a property that they can really come to be able to do it, because somebody like. They have, you know, I mean, twenty-five, twenty-two. And the associations to take care of, so you're gonna need a commercial. Uh and those commercials stickers will not be able to dump. Also, woods. Uh well. But they do have pickups, like they would be um the overflow, so assign an association calls.
Right, so they are, they're gonna need to.
So we're gonna have to figure out how to have rent up. Uh household bits.
You know, this may open up a business opportunity, someone that goes around individual homes.
Yeah, so absolutely.
Sure, so maybe we ought to be careful about that too.
Yep.
How do we identify that person?
Well, and some, there's nothing stopping the single-family owners from following you.
Hiring anybody.
How does that work for these? If, so now we've had that previously, where there are commercial entities in town that they purchase. But then they have always been able to throw in their private vehicles and bring.
They're not gonna be able to do that. We'll have to, we'll have to work out, um we'll have to work out if they need a good additional dumpster or. Um whatever they need to not do that, there are commercial entities that don't. Also.
Right, but so how would that affect the property management if they have all the.
The same, the same commercial stick is what.
So is there a P word? So you go into the gate, then shuts it off, and they're all doing, so then they'd be like, she goes down, you know, up. Next night comes a.
Yep.
Yeah, I just give that fact that that way, they have a food ready to have. Or I did not include it, I would.
Well, right now, we have a B structure that we're gonna have to look at. For the commercial, well, for the commercials, I mean, for single-family. Uh homeowners that want, or time around, it's a long.
Right.
A refrigerator. But the regular household trash.
Right.
Yeah.
Cause they're not gonna allow others who have elsewhere they kept to come and get rid of their household extra trash, and why would you allow?
Um while I already, I did talk to Will, he's the first one that I've had a chance to talk to. About putting a dumpster at his location, which he would put a truck. So. And that would be the overflow for the condo associations or for his own operation.
Right.
Um and all of that, so we could do that. Now, for those who have. Come in and said, well, you know, I have a dumpster at my location, but I have more trash than the dumpster. For those, we're gonna have to figure out another dumpster location for them. Um or something, because and those were the same people who were coming in saying, I'm coming on eleven. They're no longer doing, so they're going to need a dumpster.
So they weren't supposed to.
Another one. And they shouldn't consume it anyway because they pay for it.
Right.
Yeah, so there's two things.
Right.
Yeah, and and really, I think the only way to do that is to give them another dumpsters.
That, I, I would be a little careful lumping the property managers into that, because any of the excess. Uh household waste that they're bringing here isn't really the result of a commercial operation.
Well, some of it, some of it's from their.
Unless it's from their commercial operation, but if it's, if they're trying to haul either trash over because they were calling into Association X. That's already covered by the, by the property owners on. Playing their black fee, so we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to. It's, it's gonna be, uh it's gonna be intimate to play it out. On, in terms of the stickers or placards, uh. When were we thinking of, I know we've gone back and forth on this.
Well, we have stickers on hand right now.
So we can start.
We can start.
Okay.
Um but we gotta, we gotta think through everything and get the other stickers.
Okay, but we can phase this in too, until we get.
I mean, I would really prefer the Tuesday after maybe. Or even the Monday after maybe.
You think the state will give us? You know, month, month and a half, we don't know, but they they just seem to have some urgency.
They will have some urgency, but they're gonna have a permanent application application to work out.
Right.
They're gonna see us doing, taking, trying to do this. So.
That sounds like a reasonable thing.
I mean, that gives us the opportunity to mail the stickers to get the educational information out there. Um those still a little bit.
Right, which moves into the public information plan.
We'll talk about it every time, every time.
Right. We wanna have a flyer or a trifle, like we have with the wastewater treatment. This is the new regime.
Yeah. We can be there on maybe the.
Right.
And the post office.
Where they're the usual, yeah, the usual places, and um when's the next uh trash water sewer mailing?
Um so, you know, you just give one, so uh October.
Okay, so we won't be able to.
We're gonna be doing a more.
Right, so we can put the flyers in and in that, so here's the, here's the new regime, everybody.
You know, I I'm actually happy that we're starting down here because it's a natural operation, it's.
Get all the kinks out of it hopefully before we build it up.
And, yeah.
The larger operation, more involved.
And, you know, we're just. We're gonna, uh we can't maintain it the way you've ever did, you know, with a locked gate. And a closed area, um winter maintenance is a.
We're gonna have to talk about that too. It won't be simply. One pass through the middle of it.
Yeah, a big storm on a Monday night, we're not opening. So a lot of people stand by in from uh just being able to move around.
Right.
So are we agreeing on Sunday, Tuesday, Thursday?
Well, I'm gonna, yeah, I'm gonna, I don't see any problem with that because it's given, doesn't matter, the only thing I wanna check. Is the truck schedule and so because our intent, as long as she is available Mondays and Wednesdays. Yeah, Mondays and Wednesdays and Wednesdays and Fridays.
Right, that could potentially put it.
She did, she did ask to have two days, so Friday, Saturday.
Together, we like a Saturday, Sunday. But moving to two, we could end up with a Monday, Tuesday open because of a holiday. So, you know, you know, we could have back-to-back days.
Yeah.
Like someone, unless we wanna put out it's, you know, no, this week it's gonna be.
Monday, Wednesday, Thursday.
Right, but we probably wanna avoid. Changing the schedule, uh except when we have to.
So for sure, we're gonna find bags there on outside, but that's.
We better not, please do not do that. Yeah.
Somebody else.
We have other people that really need to learn a new system. They're not the single-family homeowners.
Well, we have to. Reemphasize our video surveillance that we already have.
And we are, yeah, we are the options.
Right, I think we need to do that in any event, and I think, uh as I mentioned earlier, we're going to have to look at. Uh a fine uh uh structure that makes it really unpalatable for someone to leave the trash.
And we will bring.
Right.
Changes, cause rather than changes for um. The the actual loads, the way that people bring stuff in.
Right.
Um, you know, uh but so we'll do everything at once. And we've been, we've been looking at other communities for the child.
Right, I know we've looked at the schedules and whatnot, we're catching up to what others have been. Have been doing.
Yeah, and that's. We will need until Wednesday to do that, so I'm probably gonna bring that information in. I'm not looking for Wednesday, Wednesday, but we can discuss it and then we can vote, but you can vote it.
Again, we always have the ability to modify the operation as we go through this.
Yeah, yeah, and we can change, we can change everything, we just need to have some structure before.
Need a special sticker for bears.
Yeah. Recharge the bears.
Well, they eat and they don't, they, they're less than.
Well, in, in part of, I, again, looking at that layout, another piece to that is, um, the seller has started. Of single screen and something. That people can blow trash into the dumpster. So we may have more people coming into this site if we go that way, because we have. Spins for in this center.
Right.
So that is, I mean, that's something that, again, I don't wanna, yeah, I don't wanna do it. I don't wanna do it immediately as we started.
No, let's get our feed.
But there are options down the road to address other. Questions, I don't know how much it costs, I don't, you know, I don't know anything about it, other than it's. Uh the resources.
This is the whole recycling issue, we've said we wish.
And we're building this, remember, with concrete pad and the covered area, so that.
The new one, the upper.
The new one, the upper.
Well, that was, that was the.
Yeah.
Partially what drove the, the design that we have.
So.
Get back to.
Again, we will go back to the engineer and say what.
Then the other thing, maybe it's part of taking care of, you know, the uh. Facebook um posts. Somebody asked him about the site, how's it, how's it getting finished off, to screen it from condos. So I think there ought to be a screening plan and plantings.
Well, you had mentioned that, I think, several weeks ago, that's something we need to consider. Once we can ever get the state to first uh approve the.
Well, and just, so everybody knows, and you can tell people, we're not building this this summer. We are not building it until next year, so we are, you know, we have time to talk about all of these things. You will redesign the.
At least of the entrance and screen.
Wanted to put it out to be a beauty, uh we may not do that. Just so we can, we wanted to get the entrance itself done while we're doing to consider it. Um but there may be that next week, so.
Is it really necessary to take down all those trees?
That we, with the area, so you both, you have to do the entrance in. And the new access road to um valley run probably. So yes, those trees that we'll cut down are all from the entrance and that that road. And there's a big box over, um that's part of the plan. Uh that also, it has to go in, so our intent, and Bob had brought this up before, is. Once everything is built and the handling and everything, then we can go back and.
Yeah, it looks, it looks awful.
It looks awful right now, and but that's, again, the construction.
Basically, that's the concern of people, other people that I've talked to.
Yep.
Is that it was beautiful, you know, running down.
Again, that was one of our limiting factors, I mean. Uh the town owns only a small portion of a less than square mile of property that uh we have access to, so where. On a downtown property, we put this uh transfer station, because we have to move. You know, it's like dominoes, right, because we have to move them down here because of the wastewater treatment facility we're building, so um. Uh you know, we don't have it like other towns where they can, they'll fit their transfer facility and way off in a corner somewhere, the forces would not like them.
Not much land left.
No, that's true.
No.
Or, I mean, we, we definitely landscaping will be something that will. It's unfortunately gonna be kind of barren this winter, yeah, um, but that was because we cleared it in the last.
We thought we'd be.
Of putting it out to get, we tried that things will be built.
Right.
This year, and we have not received our environmental review.
And the state has had that. Request since March. And I think Mark regularly contacts them and asks what the status of it is.
So. Um.
I don't think there's a problem with it, I think.
No, it's just. Process, it's people at the state, the numbers of people at the state staff.
That's what.
Back to us, we'll put it out to build and. We'll hopefully get a contract and maybe we do some of the work up. The compass so that people can start to see what it's going to look like, but it may not be until next.
And even them at landscaping, it'll take some.
It'll take some time to fill out, but, but once we get even. It'll be a lot easier to visualize sports.
Okay, any other, uh, current, uh, public comments? Questions? All right, sounds like we have a plan to move forward with a target date of. Uh, the day, uh, Labor Day weekend.
The Monday.
The Monday after Labor Day weekend, or the Tuesday depending upon, as the target date to finish with some of these. Questions and so forth. By then, okay, shall we move on to? Other business? Uh, yes, uh, unfortunately again, where the pond is. It's not open.
I sent the.
I saw on WMUR last night, they're recommending that people not swim anywhere in the street.
Really?
Yeah, the duck itch apparently is terrible this year.
What's that inside?
The duck itch? Duck itch? Have you heard, have you heard of that before?
I have not.
Oh, well, it's something that happens when you go swimming in lakes and ponds in New Hampshire, I'd never heard of it myself before moving to New Hampshire, but. Apparently the state is having a really hard time to haul. Bodies of water with this, so it's affecting a lot of. A lot of kids usually, yeah.
Is it literally linked to duck?
Yes, they're duck, it's linked to duck poop.
So it is a fecal issue.
Yeah, yeah, and it's just kids will break out and they, a rash all over their body and it's so itchy, it's just makes them completely crazy, so, yeah, it is.
Yeah, we, so.
We know though that it's.
Yeah, so, yes, so. We do more way up here and then we went down here. And then we were open and now we're back.
And it's pretty low though, we're barely over the.
Uh, eighty-eight is the measurement.
The average.
The average. That you have to meet. And, um. We're at one sixty-two and ninety-six.
One twenty-eight average.
The one twenty.
No, and we're talking about. Readings that the state takes, I need to decide if it's the left or right side of the.
And that's what we're doing now, we did today. Was we, we took a bacteria sample, a single sample from the beach area. And we're having it tested at a separate lab because all these tests are done. We're just gonna see what our number is, yeah, to compare. Um, we have tested up above at Snow's Brook. And it's very low coming in. So we have no idea. There it's.
We're tested at the Brook whenever.
Yeah, we tested it out the Brook when it was high.
To make sure that wasn't.
To make sure that.
Yeah, absolutely wasn't, it was totally clean.
It was virtually zero.
Yeah, and then the state will come test again tomorrow with results on Friday.
Right, and our results will be available tomorrow, tomorrow. So, we will have three tests. On the pond this week to look at and see what.
I think we're still somewhat flummoxed.
Well, yeah, there's no, this is, again, we're measuring seco coliform, so it's pretty specific, it's the precursor to seco. And, so, um, and it does come from, it's, it's not, uh, degrading. Biological material or. Like, it's, it's actually, it's.
And we saw a few links, like, you know, that well is pretty. Augmenting their ponds for lower or something, it's blocking, I think.
There's no. You know, uh, I have not seen anything being applied on the surrounding. Properties.
That's somehow feeding.
That's somehow feeding in.
There are a couple of.
There are, everything else, our sewer lines. Are so far away that if they were leaking, it would be coming through the ground and we would not see this. And there would be an odor, you know, and talking to Dylan. For this particular bacteria, we would smell it if somebody put down, you know. The side of the airway is washing really. We would know.
From that rain.
Yeah, it was raining.
Right there.
Right, there's literally no sources around that could be.
Matter, septic.
There are no.
There are no septic.
There are no septic in our, in all of our sewer lines. Are. Down gradient or very far away from our septic.
A big crab tries to collect all the water. From a ditch or.
In his pond.
In his pond. He doesn't show it.
Yeah.
And they also said, I'll get you wherever you are. There's a lot of septic fields in, in town. When people should be, come on, should be checking the septic, just to make sure that the wa, the water table. Yeah, that will be added.
We, we had thought about septic, but there's none in that.
Well, not for.
Oh, not for, in general, oh, yeah, I think.
They're all up the north end, you know, again, people, you will be able to tell if somebody's septic fails. And our regulations are, they've all been told that. They can't repair those systems, so if they get. If they get messed up, you now have a sewer line going by all those holes and they will have to. So.
I don't care how expensive their design is, they fail after a fashion.
Yeah, they do, yeah, they're really old.
There's fear and there's temporary inability of the septic system. Uh, to handle, um, anything because of the, the vast amounts of water soaking in. Those of us who have septic system, it doesn't happen often, but when there's a really heavy, heavy rainfall. In a short period of time, my septic system alarm will go off. But it will, it will, once the rain settles, it will, it will, uh, return to normal. It's just saying that there's just too much water in the system.
Yeah.
You.
I thought we did.
Right. Right, you just hope that it'll go back. But it's just they're temporary because of the rain, it's not like your septic system is leaking. What have you, it's just the water flow, they can't handle the water flow.
So this is, that's good.
Okay, so we still trying to figure out, uh, I, it just, it's interesting to me that. Really, when you think about it, this issue began last August, it wasn't this June. We started seeing this in August and we assumed that it was just a normal.
Very late in the year when, when the, when the inlet was way down.
Right.
And the water was.
That's what I'm saying.
Last year never cleared up, usually, but we've had only one time before last year while I've been here. We had one and it, it was at the next testing, it was clear again. So then last year when we had the, they come up again, which was, you know, the first time in a while. It didn't clear, it kept coming back, it was at the end of the season, so it wasn't as impactful to swimming and all that stuff, but it was, it never cleared on its own.
Right. So that's what I'm saying, I think the problem probably goes back to.
We probably need to be dredged, I mean, you're probably working now with such a small. Amount of water.
Is there something in the sediment that can?
Or, or it's blocking.
It was a lot more shower before we dredge and we never.
Or had this problem, okay, and we were on the testing program.
I, in, to that. I will talk to our town hydrologist who. And try to get information from them about possible causes.
Right.
And if, if it is, or if it is the shallow pond, we have the dredging project. Engineering going on right now and the dredging projects in the sea. Next year.
For twenty-four, yeah. That's gonna be a tough schedule to keep, I think.
It will be at this point. Very, it will be.
When do you think we'll get the report around the end?
Uh, they, they are due to go to us, uh, in September.
Okay, and then we can see.
We have the nation.
So which, and the cost. Any other, uh, comments on our?
And.
Back area problem?
No one's seen any of that.
No.
That's why I've been getting a lot of.
I think keeping our, I help even.
Checking. I haven't seen many ducks there at all, it's not like.
Only one or two.
At the beginning, we. I think literally in that first five months, we got one duck in. So.
The five thirty AM schedule probably for you.
Okay.
I have literally never seen a duck.
No, just that one duck.
Yeah. Oh, that's a.
They're so parents, but, uh.
Yeah, they're a couple of them.
But they've always been.
They've always.
We've always had a sign about the rocks and, yeah, we're having, so, it may not be the ducks.
Well, yeah, this is what I was thinking, because. Back in ninety-four, when we first started coming up here, I remember finding, um, a case of water. On my, uh, we had the stock, because it was at the cola, you couldn't drink the wire and boil it. It had something to do with the runoff. Um, and the levers. But that. Be a problem now?
No, we, that's why we tested the screen coming in, we tested.
Right at the. And right under the bridge and right out of, uh, Valley Road.
Yeah.
And that was, that was.
Point one.
Clean, yeah, point one. And we were looking at it in a hundred.
And we did, we said it was a runoff. That's what we understood.
There are a couple of other sources of water. That flow into the pond, but, you know.
Again, nothing. About the other, and there's no contamination of the stream.
You know, I had a bar last night that said, um. We want the state, the state, yes, so, you know, wait, wait for a few days after the rain finally starts. And we said just trying to make.
Well, that's the other thing, we thought, uh. We had all that heavy rain, the beach was all that heavy rain and they got the opposite result.
Right.
We got a, we got a high. High, uh, bacteria now.
What else did the WMUR article point to when they were saying? They were just saying that.
Just said, you know, it don't, it's not really safe for too many places in the state.
And they were giving a reason, were they saying it was due to the rain? That we've been experiencing?
Well, since they said.
Yeah.
After three or four days when the rain stopped.
Yeah.
Safe, I guess it is.
I assume they're talking about, uh, the flooding. You know, water flowing into streams and rivers from the heavy rain.
It picks up. It picks up sediment that's, it's normally not in the waters on the.
Sewer systems that fail in towns? They can't handle the water flow. The people's plans, right? Some of those plans probably.
Well, but if it's that much of a story, I mean. I don't know, the state, we do a test one, say. And maybe some information.
No, it's, it's.
Well, they call, they call over the call, they wanna make sure you posted your signs and. But they don't give it, I always ask why and they honestly seemed pretty perplexed about our specific case.
Because we're all over the place, up, we're down, we're clean, it's not one level.
You know.
And one of that.
Yeah. We would look around and go, check this because this is a good one, or there's a snout or something. And it's just not, there's nothing.
Yeah, I, I think going to the town hydrologist's, yeah, a good first step, but we may just pick up, we are reading maybe Monday. Is we may have to look at a, a larger study. You know, get an expert in here to try to help us figure out.
Well, if he can tell us that it's too shallow and we got the same water, then because it's shallow.
Well, then we. We just need to know.
We know, we got, and we need to prioritize the.
Well, and so the dredging becomes. Dredging, we definitely don't try to postpone it.
So.
Big quarters, million dollars or whatever.
So it's an organization called New Hampshire Lakes that we could possibly, you know, talk to.
Yeah, let's see what these results show, but I think we may have to call in. Outside, it's so important, we may have to call in some sort of joint. Um, effort between us and maybe the Resort Association. Uh, because you need to find the answer.
Absolutely.
Real bummer for the camps too.
Yeah.
I imagine it must be small.
Yeah, I mean, it's probably affecting boat rentals, I mean, uh, it's hard to know if it's raining or that or combination or location, I mean, there's a lot of variables there, so. It's definitely affecting, um, you know, the. The people, the kids wanting to swim and utilize it, so.
Yeah, anything else, bud? Uh, road project update.
So at the community meeting, I'm greet the road project, um. And then while that was happening, the contractor was changing it. So, it's exactly the opposite, so any of you who listened to me yesterday about the road project.
I just listened to it this morning.
Exactly the opposite, so what has happened is Snow's, they're, they're finishing now, they took it down with, comes a road. Box out of the gravel and place. Um, they will start paving at the middle of next week. Um, and as long as the weather doesn't change, and they will, by the end of next week, have all of. The Pumso Road and Silver Brookwood first. Force of view.
Snowbrook, all the way to Boulders? Or?
No, Snow's Brook, uh, down to Village.
Down to Village, you mean to come to that and, and Village.
Right, and then the plan, so then the plan was to. Go up the rest of Snow's Brook to older pathway and, um, and reclaim that. Because there's no box and I would replace me with just a. Um, but they can't do that because of the amount of. In the area, and if you've seen the area that's exposed around Village. Road, um, they're actually gonna have to give and put in French drains. Underneath that intersection. To get water out of there, because it can't clean that still enough, there's too much water that rather come out. Out of that. So, we're gonna drain it off. Into the new soil that they go through the rocks around Snow's Brook Road. Down towards the book. Um, and we'll put the water in there because it was coming in capacity. But that's going to probably be six, ten inches of water. Constant.
And that's just a consequence of all the heavy rain.
Well, yeah, and, and it seems like the whole valley was coming in and back.
Yeah, I think they're.
Into that road.
I think that when the presidential there, we got one year. I've got peed out, so there was always the water.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's long stuff.
Right, oh, that's.
Yeah, so I think I saw a chart, we're up to fourteen inches.
Uh, yeah, fourteen inches since the first of June.
I saw on WMUR, it said thirteen the other day, but.
Yeah, so we may even have a bit more.
Anyway, that, that is, the plan now, instead of Snow's Brook Road. Is to come up to Valley Run. And they will be drainage structures first and then they will take off the. And then they will box out and redevelop it. Um, it'll be one lane traffic coming into town. For probably. A couple of weeks. Because by Triple I Road to.
That was way, that was.
And then the rain hopefully will subside and, and, uh, Snow's Brook can dry.
Other water, water.
And the, you know, they're working with a paving company that's got other jobs and they're being occupied cleverly and. So all of the. Schedules and a lot of.
Animal remains.
Animal remains. So, um, the, the biggest thing is we're gonna start on Valley Run. So, and then they go back. And everything, you know, as long as. The weather here has not had a big change. It's everywhere else that they're, even the emergency reports that are meaning to be done. They just can't do the work for one of the jobs, so. We're still, we're still confident that we get everything done by early December, October. As long as we don't. Maybe soon, uh, we would.
Okay, good then, anything else on the road project? All right, uh, the wells three and four. Wildlife mediation update.
Um, so we have one bid, I, I really, I don't wanna talk about it because we have another contractor who is bidding, so. Um, I hope to have the second bid by Wednesday. And the, but there's. The only problem with the bid that we've received so far is can't do the work until September. And um, the deadline is August fifteenth. So we're gonna go back to ask the biologists at the Land National Forest. And we do the work in September. And we'll find out, you know, how that is, because this bid maybe, maybe moved because.
Forest service, right? But we're still having around a bid and.
Doing to us for three minutes.
Right, and that could get done by.
If it gets done by the fifteenth, then.
Okay. Anything else on?
Uh, we did check, we have, um, we have notch the two dams. Um, and uh, just in cutting them. Um, just be what the action would be, and there's been two. Yeah, we just.
Wasn't so much.
And generally, if you do that, you come back the next day and they're, they've already started working on it. But neither one of the notches have been prepared. And that's as of Monday. So I don't know. But we notched them last.
Both dams?
Oh, both the, the dams that were gonna be built. So, um, anyway, we'll see, we'll see if there's any activity up there. Um, the water, even with all the rain, the water has not been pushed within the fifty foot. Set map yet, so. We're hopeful that as long as we stay outside with fifty feet. Uh, they do it at different times, once in the winter and once in the spring. And give us a written report in the late spring each year. All I know is we get it in spring and they said that they're doing. Springtime. They, they're, they can go out there at any time. Do, the wells are perfect, so. And they put pismeters in the stream.
Any other questions? Okay, water project update?
Uh, really nothing.
Generator? Now surprised, but again, that was always, uh, we never had one. That's, you know. That's a redundancy we hope to have. Soon, whatever soon turns out to be, but as I was, but still waiting for the communication, electricity issues to be. Practically solved, right? We've got a. Right.
And. We're now just.
Your questions and comments on the water project update?
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for saying. Okay, so uh, I'll entertain a motion to.
I want maybe one other thing.
Oh, okay.
You know. You know, whether it's twenty-seven or twenty-two. Why don't we just make a lot of.
They are actually.
They already want it. He's already made the changes. The only thing that we can't do is run up the boards, and I believe it's the motor. Do not do twenty-six miles an hour. So, the, the two stationary signs, they're gonna change to both come on at twenty-six. Unfortunately, we have to set the motor at twenty-five.
Right.
So, but, but. That's.
Right, well, actually, you know, uh, uh, we had, we had addressed this uh, some, some time ago, trying to synchronize it, but it's just that we have three different systems. Uh, that have different parameters uh, to them.
We, we named as the system as they come to, of this, come on.
All right, so uh, motion to go in in our public.
All right, let me stop recording.